7th, 2023 to order. And if you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Alabas.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Felkins.
Here. And if we could have a motion to approve the agenda as it's presented?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment this evening.
Can you talk right there? Go ahead, tell me your name. Tell them your name.
My name is Edith.
Go ahead and tell them what you want to talk about.
And I'm here to approve the idea for Relay Rocks.
Can you tell them about it?
Um, Relay Rocks is... Relay Rocks is a community rock garden that will start during Relay for Life. And, um, during Relay for Life, kids will get to paint rocks and put them in a garden in a park. And it will become a community rock garden for everybody in the community to share.
Do you want to tell them when Relay is?
Relay is August 19th.
Okay, and it's at the city park?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Amy Gonzalez, I'm here on behalf of Up North Arts. And we are in the agenda today to talk about the painting I see as part of the agenda. And I just wanted to make note, I have seen the four bids and who bid on them. And I just wanted to comment that three of the people, which you probably already know, are from the Grand Rapids area, and one person is local. Unfortunately, the local person wasn't the lowest bid significantly. The lowest bid was significantly less, I understand that. But I would like to make the comment that with the local bidder, you can make some assumptions that they are going to spend that money in the community, that they're going to, you know, invest in the community and all of that. And I just wanted to make note of that, so when you're making your final decision, you could take consideration, that into consideration when taking a look at it. Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor. Yes, can you hear me okay? Randy Lindell, Cadillac. Um, just a couple of things to start the program. First, I appreciate the city's efforts in extending to Herring Township with the pollution and the PFAS, the opportunity to take on city water. I mean, it seems like a no-win situation to me. Uh, but again, uh, knowing a little bit of, having a a degree in environmental health and knowing what's happening out there. Herring is all, you know, it's really, uh, they've got big trouble. I mean, even with their sewer system around Lake Cadillac. I mean, uh, they're not handling it properly. And to spend almost $3 million just for, uh, you know, new water and wells. I just think that the city extended an olive leaf to Herring Township. And being Herring Township, there would be a benefit to them, even though there was a 5% increase in the budget. Uh, anyways, it would have been well worth their time to extend the cooperation back to the city. But no, being, being Herring Township, which we know, you know, they want to... But it would be, it'd be a bonus. We know what our water is up here, we know how good it is, we know what's going on, we know the aquifers, but they want to spend the money. And how much would it cost them to switch over? I don't know, maybe I should be at a third meeting, but anyways, I just want to mention that. And, uh, I just, um, want to say thank you to the mayor for some help she did for a couple of ladies the other day. Thank you, mayor. And, um, before my time runs out, it looks like we're going to discuss the city manager. And you guys are going to go into closed session, so I'll make this real quick. Uh, Marcus has been here 12, 13 years now. Yeah, uh, Marcus, you've been the most tenured city manager we ever had. And it's very interesting why your tenure has been so long. And, uh, what we see in the city, you know, I always keep coming, "Why are we doing this ordinance? Why are we doing this ordinance? We're changing this ordinance." And I do see what really upsets me the most, and I want to be careful, but more people are making money off our city and the citizens' tax dollars than the citizens, you know. And companies, et cetera, are getting tax breaks, et cetera, et cetera, and tax, et cetera, et cetera incentives. And yes, I know we need jobs. But how much, how much? Can we go on? Uh, Marcus, how long do you want to stick around?
Hey, Mr. Lindell.
Is it time to go?
Thank you.
Again, you know, 12, 13 years. Thank you, mayor. Don't play pickleball, it's a tough game.
I just got a hit real fast. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on July 17th. Would someone like to make the motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us to some communications.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass from 4:30 PM to 7:30 PM on August 31st, 2023, for the Catholic Human Services Overdose Awareness Event.
I would make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from 4:30 PM to 7:30 PM on August 31st, 2023, for the Catholic Human Services Overdose Awareness Event.
Support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
It's being recommended to approve the closure of Lake Street at the public parking or at the parking lot entrance on both sides of the municipal building, and the closure of the south and east parking lots of the municipal building from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM on September 11th, 2023, for the Cadillac Fire Department 9/11 Expo.
I would make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street at the parking lot entrance on both sides of the municipal building, and the closure of the south and east parking lots of the municipal building from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM on September 11th, 2023, for the Cadillac Fire Department 9/11 Expo.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. And this evening, we have a few appointments.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the reappointment of Stephen Barnes to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on August 7th, 2027.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Stephen Barnes to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on August 7th, 2027.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
It's being recommended to approve the appointment of Trenton Stang to the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority for a four-year term to expire on August 7th, 2027.
I would make a motion to approve the appointment of Trenton Stang to the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority for a four-year term to expire on August 7th, 2027.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
And as is done every year, MML is requiring that we designate a primary representative and an alternate to attend and vote at the Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention.
Um, yeah, I'm happy to, and if T I...
Yep, sure.
Sure. So if someone would make that motion?
I'll make a motion to designate, um, Mayor Felkins as a primary representative and Councilmember Shippers as the alternate to attend and vote at the Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention.
I'll second it.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. Takes us to the city manager's report.
Uh, yes, good evening, mayor, and members of the city council. Just a brief report this evening with a request with regard to the city's holiday schedule. City council had had some discussion earlier this summer, actually on Juneteenth itself, as to whether or not we should look at adding it as a holiday. And that is the request for consideration this evening.
I would make a motion to add Juneteenth to the city holiday schedule.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. All right. And then that takes us to our second public comment for this evening.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Gerald Olson, I live on Houston Street here in Cadillac. My question is, in four weeks, school will be starting. Will the streets that are torn up for repaving and whatever else needs to be done going to be completed, so the kids aren't in danger of big equipment swinging around? Yes or no? You don't know.
We can address it later during the Good of the Order. Normally, we don't, we don't converse during public comment.
Okay. I just wanted to know.
Okay.
Because I noticed it wasn't done, and they started in April, so...
Yes, a lot of work.
Okay, thank you.
Council, mayor. May everyone. Um, just like the Osway, on the bidding of the painting of the senior center, the Up North Arts Building, and how the bidding process proceeded, where we had already awarded, I believe, the contract to that young gentleman, Campbell. And then everything fell apart. And for some reason why, they would have to re-award it to an out-of-town place, even though his bid was extra high. But, uh, how good of work do we know that this company has proceeded in, in their past, and what they have done, and what their recommendations are at? So, uh, that's one thing. A couple of things I've, I've been hearing, and everybody should be noticed, and from the supervisors on down, we've been going through a lot of supervisors lately, water department, street department. That poor gentleman in the street department, water department, suffered a massive heart attack through verbal abuse. And the employees that the city is going through. I just don't understand what's happening here, because, you know, there used to be some unity here, and I do not see the unity here too, so... And Marcus is making his comments there and that. So if he's going to do that to me and not give me my attention, I'll ask him that. Marcus, um, you're going to be going to your, uh, at your request, uh, for more, for your appointments, if you're going to stick around. But, um, again, I'm going to reiterate, a lot of people are doing quite well since you've been in administration here. Our ordinances have all changed, et cetera, et cetera. And you guys are going to go vote on a new contract. I hope there's not a car in there. But again, Marcus, you've been here as the longest reigning tenured city manager. And the purpose of that is that we've seen him the longest is five years. And, uh, hey, we appreciate your efforts in that, but I would proceed to the city council. You know, uh, even from Planning Commission to the Appeals Commission, you know, if we could just get one besides, may, one or two no votes, but we cannot even do that since you've been here. If there's ever been more than a majority of no votes, I'd like to see that, but, uh, hey, we appreciate everything, Marcus, but, uh, man, it just seems, uh, hey, maybe it's time.
Okay, thank you.
The people that, that are treating the supervisors and that a lot better there. That one gentleman, Kenny, is hurt bad and had to quit. And he, and there was no reason for that. And you guys all know what's happening. I'm right. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment. And then we have to go back to a tabled item from our last meeting.
Okay. Uh, thank you, mayor, and members of the city council. The tabled item this evening is in regard to painting and washing of the Cadillac Community Center, the former Naval Reserve Center. Uh, subsequent to city council's action at the last council meeting, we went out for bidding. Uh, we did receive four bids, uh, with the lowest bid coming in from Do-It-All Painting in the amount of $27,640. Um, there is, as you'll see in the bid tabulation chart, um, you know, quite a discrepancy, with the highest bid coming in at $59,200. Uh, and the next lowest bid coming in from 37, coming in at $37,500. Um, staff from our finance department did essentially raise an eyebrow, seeing the numbers all over, all over the board. Uh, we do have a local preference purchasing ordinance, um, where if you are actually located within the city of Cadillac, there's a 5% fudge factor. If you're within, um, the, I want to say the four surrounding townships, it goes down to, I believe, 3%. And I might, I might be off on that, but there's a scale. Uh, and then if you're within a certain county area, it goes to maybe 1% or 2%. But regardless of those, given the variance in how the bids came in, the, the local preference ordinance doesn't apply to any of it. Uh, references, though, were checked. Uh, conversations were had with, uh, the Do-It-All Painting out of Grand Rapids. Uh, and they came back positive. And so there was nothing, um, that was relevant for us to be able to mention this evening in terms of making a recommendation for another, um, for another vendor. I don't believe, um, that that is outside of city council's purview. I think council does have the authority to, to give it to whomever you wish, but we couldn't, we couldn't give you a justification tonight to go with, with a different company other than the lowest bidder on this, on this occasion, so...
Um, well, I'm, I'm pleased to see that, um, you know, even though there was a, there was a wide berth there, um, I think it was important for us to go out and do that. And, and that shows us why. Um, I do have a question about when they can get going with the project. I know that Up North Arts was concerned with that. So did we get a timeline that they can begin the project?
The document said completion, I believe, September 30th.
Oh, okay.
So it gives them a couple of months. And, and that came up at the walkthrough that we had.
Okay.
Well, I just Googled Do-It-All Painting, and I only found two reviews. Somebody that had their deck painted, and then one person had their house painted. That's all I found. It, it doesn't seem, it's sad, it doesn't seem fair to Mr. Campbell, because he already had his bid out. They know, the other competition knew how much he was bidding and how much to underbid. So in this time, the bidding process doesn't seem right or correct. So, something to think about.
I'll, I'll respectfully disagree. I think we have...
I knew you would.
We have a duty to bid it. Mr. Campbell had the right to rebid it and rebid it for whatever price he wanted to, but for our fiscal responsibility, we had to have a bid through that process. The other thing I'd like to do is thank staff, because I think we had to check the leases, and that hadn't been done before. So we didn't know what our responsibility was. And I think by getting that information, we're able to say, yes, this is an area that the city is responsible for in the building. Uh, and therefore, we're not doing something we shouldn't be doing with, with taxpayer money.
Okay. So would someone like to entertain a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to award Cadillac Community Center Painting Project to Do-It-All Painting in the amount of $27,640.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas.
No.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, so then that takes us to Good of the Order for this evening.
Just wanted to quickly mention, um, we had a great ribbon-cutting ceremony at the new pickleball facilities, um, just this past Friday. Uh, the family, the, the, and I always have a hard time pronouncing his name, Sorgin, Sorgin. Shogren. 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 Uh, no disrespect to the Shogren family, but with all the respect and sincerity, um, a huge thank you to them. Uh, Cliff was there with his son and other, other family members, and a $100,000 donation that made it all possible, um, coupled with, and of course, the outside funding that came in from about a half a dozen different agencies. It was really neat, uh, to see it happen. There, there had to have been 50 to 75 people there, plus maybe even more. Uh, an area pickleball club showed up. Uh, and so Mr. Van Ooster is sitting in the, in the audience, was there playing. So it was really a neat turnout and great, uh, great to see everybody there, so... That was it.
I have a couple, a couple of things that I want to make.
Alex, can you, um, mention, um, the street? Talk about when that street would be completed by Franklin?
Do we have a date on that?
Yes, I tried to find out if there was a schedule for paving on Division. Um, the last I'd heard is that one was, was mostly on time, so, um, that should be, I know that the curbs are looking pretty done, and they were, they were leveling and grading. I drove by it this morning, and that one is looking really close to, to paving to be able to open. We did run into some underground utility issues on Lester Street. Um, we've been managing that pretty close. And we have been already in, in contact with the principal of Franklin Elementary School. And, and she is very receptive to, to the needs of the plan. Uh, grateful that we're adding sidewalks to, to enhance the safety of the students. Understands that really, if it would have gone how it looked like it would on GIS, as far as some of the underground stuff, um, probably would have been on schedule. A little bit of a delay, but we're in regular communication with the principal at Franklin. And she's, again, we're very willing to work with us and, and understanding, uh, if there's still anything we can do to get at least the top coat on that, we certainly will. The buses and everything are kind of on the other side. The parents had to deal with some of the pickup and drop-off issues a little bit, uh, when we did some other work over there on Carmel, so, um, she also communicates with them. So that's the, that's the latest I know on that. It's a good question, and we're trying to get those done as quick as we can.
Thank you.
So I want to, um, mention what Edith talked about, the, the rock garden. Um, she's very active with, um, Relay for Life and raising money for the American Cancer Society. She does all kinds of projects to raise money for the American Cancer Society. And one of them, she didn't go into detail, she talked to me about it, um, is to have people pay to paint a rock at, at the Relay for Life. So that helps raise funds for that, too. And if we could, I don't know, maybe there's somebody, maybe Gabe or somebody could reach out to her and see if there's a spot that would, we could put some cool painted little rocks somewhere. Would you do that?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And the other, the other thing is, is this Friday, the youth council is, um, having a movie in the park. At dusk, it's, um, Inside Out. It's free, bring your family, we'll have some concessions. And, uh, it's really fun to go sit down at the park, bring a blanket or chair, whatever, and, uh, enjoy a really fun movie with, with your kids. We're also still seeking funding for the next movie, which is Cars, which is in a few weeks, and we're still a little bit short on that. So if anybody wants to pitch in to support...
Who's sponsoring the movie this Friday?
This Friday is, we have, we have two sponsors that have donated. So I think this one is the, um, YAC.
Okay.
This one is the, um, Community Foundation.
Yes.
Yeah. And the other was, um, Consumers. I think, Consumers or DT.
DT.
DT. Yeah, DT, I don't remember. Sorry. Um, so, but Cars, so we went and visited some car dealers and... But haven't gotten the funding. So if anybody wants to do that, that'd be swell. Um, that is all.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good. Keep all quiet.
Good. Okay. Um, well, we do need to go into closed session tonight, so if someone would like to make the motion to get us there, that would be great.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268A to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager, a public officer and employee at his written request.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Are you ready, Sandy?
One second. Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to return to Felkins' session.
Okay, well, um, we had the opportunity to...
A support?
Oh.
Sorry. Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
There it is. Yes, motion carries. Okay, so, uh, we did have an opportunity in closed session to, uh, meet as a council, um, to discuss Marcus's annual evaluation. And, uh, we did agree that, uh, the outcome of the, um, the, um, evaluation was that, um, he was meeting the, um, he was meeting all of the categories, um, doing well. Um, the city's doing well. Um, and... And we also discussed the opportunity, moving forward, to continue to tweak our executive feedback tool, to be more focused on the accountabilities that have, that we all agree as a council, we would definitely like to focus in on for the next year. And so we're going to, in support of Marcus, meet on a quarterly basis, first meeting to set the document for the year and the things we're going to focus on, and then the other three meetings, just meeting to have conversation and see how we can best support the work that we think is most important for the city and for Marcus in the coming year. So we did have an ask from Marcus, and is there anything that any other council member would like to say? And if not, you're not a council member.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for all the time everyone spent on the process with the new format. I think, I think that I like the new form, and I think that it's going to show, you know, all the great things that, you know, we, we work on and do collaboratively, and it will show a new way of measuring it, and looking forward to, you know, to the next, to, to the next.
Good.
So I'll just say it.
All right.
I'll just say it like that. And, and I also appreciate the compensation adjustment.
Okay.
If I didn't mention it, and I think I did, kindly to make it retro to when we would have done the...
Yes, and so I will just clarify what the, the ask was this year, and the ask was in, what Marcus said was, in keeping it simple, his request would be for the adjustment to minimally be on par with the annual adjustments that were given to other full-time staff members that aren't part of the union, and also with, once that 4% adjustment is put onto the base salary, he's asking for a 1.5% one-time inflationary adjustment that was also provided to the other full-time staff members. So that is his ask, and I would entertain a motion.
And on that discussion, then, then I would have a comment.
Yeah.
My concern is that because the raise last year was over 7%, which was over anybody else's raise, I'm concerned about giving a raise that high this year. And, and while we discuss the evaluation, I, I think that to go that high, we would have to see greater improvement, but I don't think it's there yet. So it's Marcus, it's nothing against Marcus, but I think to be fiscally responsible, to do, you don't just give raises for the sake of giving raises, that's my very conservative business owner side. I think that the ask is too high for this year.
Good, thank you.
I think, I felt, last year, I think as I was looking at the numbers and his experience, that I felt like our city manager was underpaid, when I looked at the surrounding areas, when I looked at, when I looked at, you know, people that were sending him job offers. This year, I don't feel that way. I feel like he, he's in a good place. I think giving him the exact same raise as the rest of the city employees would be an appropriate thing to do.
Well, should be nobody's surprise, I agree with Steve. That's it, very simple. T I?
I'm...
You're ready to vote?
Okay, someone would make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that the city manager receive a 4.4% adjustment on his base pay, which increases his salary to $120,249.23, and also be given the 1.5% one-time inflationary bonus that is taken off of that 4% increase number of the $120,000, just like it was for the city employees. Yeah?
And that total for that one-time bonus is $1,803.75, just to clarify.
I support.
The only request was whether it would be retro to when we would have...
Oh, okay, if you would add that to the motion, please.
What is the date that we're...
May 15th.
And I'd add to the request that it's retroactive to May...
May 17th. The last, the last one was effective May 16th of 2022.
Okay, so May 17th.
Make it retroactive to May 17th of 2023.
I support that amendment.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
No.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
No.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Great conversation tonight, guys, and so we'll plan to get that meeting before our next council meeting. Okay, thank you.